If everyone would please stand and our special guest from PAC 103, if you gentlemen will come up front and help lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. All the way. Okay, we'll face the flag. Who's going to start?
I'm going to start. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Please jab, Mr. Holt.
Ms. Leeves, will you please call the roll? Mr. Air?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sparks?
Ms. Waters?
Present.
Madam President, we have a forum. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the September 13th, 2022 council retreat.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the September 13th council retreat. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Approval of the executive session memorandum from September 13th, 2022.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the executive session memorandum from September 13th, 2022. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Approval of the minutes from the September 13th council meeting.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the September 13th, 2022 council meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Thank you very much. Approval of the agenda.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Thank you very much. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I have one slip, and that is from Lisa Hall, so if you would like to come forward and share with us your topic this evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Lisa Hall. I represent feedingteam.org. Our address is 485 Sheridan Road, Noblesville. And I'm just here to invite you all to our food fundraiser this weekend. It's Saturday at Federal Hill Commons. It's from 3:00 to 9:00. We have food trucks, we're going to have three bands, we have a bounce house for the kids. And while the kids are in the bounce house, we have a beer and a wine tent.
Since you looked at the mayor with the bounce house, he was going to go.
Even adults can get in the bounce house. But we have over 60 silent auction items. And after Friday, we will have 23 pantries located in Noblesville. But that will be our 49th pantry that's going out so far, and we have a waiting list. But we've got a poster here. The QR code's active, the bidding for the silent auction is open now. So we'd appreciate if y'all could show up. Mayor Jensen's going to be there again for the second year to welcome everyone to Federal Hill Commons in Noblesville. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would now like to invite the members of the Board of Friends of Central Pool to come forward for a special recognition of their service to the community of Noblesville. I'm going to just, I'll sit here. Twenty-five years ago, Friends of Central Pool organization saved a much-needed community asset from demolition. Their passion for the sport of swimming, as well as recognition of this unique facility that Noblesville had, has been invaluable for the community and tourists. The Friends have been a great partner for the city and the Parks Department by saving, improving, and safely operating this Noblesville gem. Operating pools is a costly, labor-intensive, and specialized endeavor, and the Friends of Central Pool has been able to do it successfully for over the past 25 years. They've made improvements to the whole facility and added several amenities to continue to enhance the facility and the experience for its users. Truly, without Friends of Central Pool, Noblesville may very well not have this fantastic amenity that is so desperately needed and revered in our community. So thank you all for your time and dedication. And will you come up and take a picture? Will you come up and take a picture, please? So, yeah, if we can squeeze in her together. And for those that are, for those that are in the audience, the mayor did do a proclamation on their official celebration day, so this is a chance to the council.
Right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Okay. We'll move on to council committee reports with the Economic Development Committee and Mr. O'Connor.
Madam President, thank you very much. The ED Committee met September 14th. We had a very informative discussion on our new project, Innovation Mile, with Arkansas Tons, WSP, and Hagman Group. This is one of our up-and-coming economic development areas, and the planning is underway. Different, there was a meeting for some different designs, some different ideas, some uses in that area. So there will be more forthcoming on that, but suffice to say that we look forward to bringing forward a plan that I think everybody will find attractive, and most importantly, hopefully, the development community will, will support it on a go-forward basis. We talked a little bit about marketing, our Blue Sky partnership, looked at a lot of different things involving our electronic presence and then different ways that we can capitalize on that to go to market. So Salesforce will be part of that planning as our economic development staff goes forward and looks for different opportunities for the city, for some different business sectors that we're interested in. Talked a little bit about workforce attraction. As you recall, we made an investment in Make My Move. Interestingly enough, we received 3,512 applications for 15 spots. So quite obviously, the incentive was there, but I think people found the city of Noblesville an attractive place to potentially relocate. And this was originally designed for remote work, but as this evolves, it may become more related to just bringing new talent into the city. So this is an interesting program, and we'll see how this goes for us in the future. Talked a little bit about our TIFF districts. As you know, we've got Policy Analytics doing the reviews on all of the TIFF districts in the city. And we've got that information now that'll help us from a financing perspective on a lot of projects going forward. So talked a little bit about Salesforce, which is a new marketing tool that the Economic Development Department has implemented and is building. And I think we're going to do a little bit of discussion regarding Washington Business Park, which everybody's aware of, new buildings coming out of the ground, more to come. And I think that was really it, but it was a good meeting, and fortunately, there continues to be a high degree of demand for the city of Noblesville and economic development here. So I think that's a credit to the administration and the economic development staff talking to businesses and bringing opportunities forward. So that's my report, Madam President.
Wonderful. Any questions of Mr. O'Connor? Seeing then, we'll move on to the wastewater committee and Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. Wastewater Committee met on Monday, June 6th. Myself, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Sparks were all present. We talked about a number of things, especially to do with the upcoming budget, which is going to be coming up here soon. We also talked about some planned and unplanned expenses that we're going to be having with the future. And then we talked something that I think is on a lot of different people's minds. We are changing our bill pay, and I know I've had a lot of complaints from different people that, on two things. One, the fact that you can't set up monthly bills with the new bill payment you will. And then the second thing is your bills will no longer be going to Detroit, Michigan, which is something that I've had lots of complaints on. It's kind of interesting, our bills always go up there and get done, and that will not happen anymore. They will actually be going either Noblesville address or an Indianapolis address, but either one, they'll be staying fairly local for us, so.
Great.
That's it.
Any questions of Mr. Boyce? We'll move on to Finance Committee and Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. We met last Thursday, September 22nd. Greg O'Connor, Dan Peterson, Megan Wildes, and myself were in attendance. Jeff, I'm sorry, John Hughes discussed with us the bond authorization for the Pleasant Street project. And Amy Smith discussed with us economic development area bond authorization for Midland Point. Sarah Reed talked about the economic development agreement with Promenade Trails. Ian Zolinski and Jeff Spalding went over our 2023 civil city budget. And Jeff Spalding explained to us the high value, highest assessed value, AV, levy growth appeal that we're presently doing. Jeff also discussed bond authorization for the 2023 one-year Series A and B bond. That and the claims docket comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Davis?
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move we approve the claims as submitted.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the claims as submitted. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Thank you. Miscellaneous number one, council to consider approval of the Hamilton County Emergency Operations Plan, Mr. Shane Booker.
Well, good evening. My name's Shane Booker. I'm the Executive Director of Hamilton County Emergency Management. I'm proud to say that I was born and raised here in Noblesville, and it is my honor to serve my hometown and my home county as your Emergency Management Director. Emergency Management, as many of you may know, is a county-level public safety department, and we support the city mainly during disasters, emergencies, but we also do that during special events. And we're able to do that with our staff and nearly 200 volunteers, and through that, we're able to enhance public safety and reduce operational cost. And so we use a lot of our equipment, such as light towers and generators and other things like that, by allowing the city to use those free of charge, which allows us to exercise them and then also provide awareness of those resources to police, fire, public works, and others when we're doing those, those operations. Emergency Management really isn't in charge of anything. We're just here to provide a level of support and coordination through the county's Emergency Operations Center. We do that through information coordination, resource management, and support, and then also consequence management during an emergency or disaster. And the city is still, you know, as you do every day, responsible to providing, you know, to the needs of your citizens, but then we're there to help in the event that there may be resources that you're having difficulties finding or being able to collect information. So a lot of times, especially during winter storms or severe weather, we're putting together information and sharing that with the city to be able to provide a comprehensive plan of what's happening and what we're doing in preparations for those types of incidents. We do have an Emergency Operations Plan, and that serves as the foundation of our program. We're required every two years to update that plan. And this year, the only changes that we've really made, the significant change, is changing it from comprehensive emergency management plan to emergency operations plan. That is the terminology that FEMA is going with. Even though our plan is strategic in nature, we are using that term of emergency operations plan, which also fits in with the accreditation that we're pursuing. We're hopeful that we will be able to be, next year, announce that we are the first emergency management program in the state of Indiana that is accredited through a national organization, and that's something that is strengthening and improving our plans, including the coordination to ensure that we're, you know, seeking the council's approval of our plan prior to requesting the mayor's signature. And so that's what I bring before you this evening, is your consideration of the county's Emergency Operations Plan. It has been adopted by the Board of Commissioners, and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Booker? Mr. O'Connor.
I'm just curious, who's the National Accreditation Board? Is that a DC-based entity, or?
It's through the National Emergency Management Association, and that does have input through FEMA, the National Association of Counties, and it's also through the International Association of Emergency Managers. So it's really comprehensive-based group. All of the states are a member of that organization, and really, that's the only opportunity that we have for accreditation.
Be good to be first.
Yes, it will. And that's, that's why we're, I mean, it's, it's making us stronger for sure. There are plans that we didn't have in place where we had a lot of operational procedures, which is good, but it's great that it's making us stronger, but then that will also, is something that will be very nice to be the first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? So if I could have a motion to approve the Emergency Operations Plan, please.
So moved, seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the Emergency Operations Plan as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work with us.
Thank you.
Previously discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance number 45-07-22, an ordinance annexing approximately 63 acres north of 171st Street, south of the Midland Trace Trail, east of Mill Creek Road, and west of Willow View Road, known as Midland Overlook Plan Development in Noblesville Township, Joyce Ann Yelton.
Good evening. This has been on the agenda for quite some time. This is not considered to be a super voluntary annexation, so therefore, we've had to do some extra steps. In late July, we sent notices to all the property owners of record, as well as the adjacent property owners, talking about the public hearing that would be held this evening. We also included, as a part of that information, the public notice, we included the legal description, a map of the area to be, to propose to be annexed, a zoning map, and the legal notice and the fiscal plan. As you recall, we did adopt the fiscal plan approximately 60 days ago. So tonight, we're here strictly for the public hearing portion of this proposed annexation. After we have a public hearing, state statute allows us to consider the actual ordinance adopting the annexation, but it has to be a minimum of at least 14 days. So at your October 11th meeting, you could actually adopt the ordinance. With that, I will ask if you have any questions of staff. If not.
Any questions of staff?
Madam President.
Yes.
Just from the legal side, just because this one's a little different than the last couple annexations we have done, because in the last couple, it was developer-owned property at the time of the annexation. The way this one came forward was the project happened a year before the census, and you can't annex in a year before a census. And so that's why it's a little bit of a different process, and that's why we have, we would call it, instead of a super voluntary annexation, it's just an annexation opportunity for all the different property owners to speak. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update on why that was different and why it came after the development. It just happened to do with the year that the project happened, which was a year before the census. So that's why it's before you now.
Thank you very much. So no questions for staff? I did receive a request to speak from William Barrell.
Yeah, let's open the public hearing first.
So we need to open the public hearing for ordinance number 45-07-22. Now you come forward, and if you'll please state your name and your address.
William Barrell, 17275 South Mill Creek Road. We live right onto the west side of that. And we, we got a letter saying that you guys want to do the right-of-way on the other side of the Mill Creek Road of 45 feet, and then we don't see it in this proposal, but is that true or not? Or do you not know?
I do not know. I'm going to defer to Ms. Yelton.
On the west side of Mill?
We're on Mill Creek Road there, but you see the multiple lanes and property. We had a letter earlier stating that you wanted 45 feet of right-of-way on the west side of Mill Creek Road. We are also, well, easement.
Easement?
Yeah. We were also told by a county surveyor that if you don't do that, then if you guys annex that property and part of the road, there's always a fight later, who's going to maintain that road, who's going to plow that road, and that's why we're here today. We don't know.
I will ask Ms. Yelton if she can help to answer that question. Or Mr. Hughes.
Or Mr. Hughes, what?
This, you guys are going to annex that part of the road on Mill Creek?
Okay, so.
We own here.
Okay. So by state statute, when we do an annexation, we are required to annex in the entire right-of-way of the roads adjacent. So in this case, we are, yeah, we are, sort of, if I put this on the document here. Okay. So what the gentleman is referring to is, when we do annexations by state statute, we have to also include the entire right-of-way. Years and years ago, you didn't have to include right-of-way, and then they amended the state statute to include you had to go to the center line of road, and now for the past several years, we have to take in the entire right-of-way. So basically, since he lives adjacent to the right-of-way that we are taking in, he was also given notice about this particular annexation. As far as who maintains that Mill Creek Road, I want to say right now, the county does.
It's currently county.
So, you know, we have some of these roads that, you know, we negotiate with the county, who's going to fully maintain them and who's not. You know, this might be a road that we, you know, that we take over. It's yet to be seen, but somebody will maintain it. It'll, you know, I just can't tell.
So is our right-of-way given to the city of Noblesville?
It currently is with the county, correct? That right-of-way is county right-of-way?
Yes. I'm, I'm going to guess that his legal description currently, because it looks like it's a meets and bounds, goes to the center line of road. So basically, what we are doing is annexing in from the center line of road to what would be his prop, actual property line.
Right, which is the right-of-way that's current.
Right.
So you are taking 45 feet.
Right.
And that's just right-of-way? That's not, that's not annexing it in? It's our?
Well, the, the right-of-way will be annexed.
The technical term is annex. So what it means is that portion of Mill Creek Road will be within the city of Noblesville, and as, as Ms. Yelton said, the statute just now requires, when you annex on a road, you have to do both sides of the, of the center line, so you have to take the whole road.
So what does that mean to us as homeowners and property owners?
It shouldn't mean anything other than the road outside of your residence will now be within the city of Noblesville limits, and then it'll be between, as Ms. Yelton was saying, we have interlocal agreements with the county as to whether the county would plow all of Mill Creek Road, or whether the city would plow this portion of Mill Creek Road, and we would work that out with the county. But that would be, it's our obligation to make sure that that road gets maintained.
He won't get a separate tax bill for?
There will not be a separate tax bill. Nope. You will not be, your property is not included within any of the taxes.
And if you can see, there's an offset in the multiple property lanes. The county owns that property already, so I take it you're annexing that 20 feet that they are going to go.
No, no, we are only annexing just the right-of-way, just the Mill Creek Road right-of-way. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that answers a little bit.
New one for us.
Yeah, I wouldn't wear that. It'd be interesting.
We've all learned something new. Thank you. Thank you.
And Ms. Yelton's exactly right, and he, and this gentleman was as well. It used to be the center line, but then it was, well, who, do we just plow one side of the road? Who plows the other side? So statute just said you have to take the whole road.
Okay.
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Seeing no one else from the public coming forward, I'd move to close the public hearing for ordinance 45-07-22.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for ordinance number 45-07-22. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. And then this ordinance will be up for consideration at our next meeting in November.
October.
October, sorry. Council to consider ordinance number 54-08-22, an ordinance annexing approximately 18.4 acres north of East 191st Street and west of Little Chicago Road, known as Red Fox Point Plan Development in Noblesville Township. Ms. Yelton.
Good evening again. This one happens to be a super voluntary annexation, so it follows what I call the normal path approval, approval process. Again, a public hearing on this item was held at the last council meeting, and no one at that meeting came forward to speak. The property is currently zoned R2 residential with a PD overlay. It is proposed for 44 single-family housing units, and based on the facts that no one appeared at the public hearing and that the fiscal plan was previously adopted, staff request adoption of this annexation ordinance.
Any questions? Ms. Yelton?
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move we approve ordinance 54-08-22 as presented. I'd move we approve ordinance fifty-four dash zero-eight dash twenty-two as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number fifty-four dash zero-eight dash twenty-two as presented. This is a roll call vote. Please.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance number fifty-five dash zero-nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance approving additional appropriations in the debt service, long-term debt, fifteen percent reserve capital fund. Mr. Spalding?
Madam President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO. And this, again, is the second reading on this. We talked about it at the last council meeting, and it is a quite technical fiscal action and basically just correcting a relatively minor budgeting error. But in the case of municipal government, whatever you're going to spend has to be appropriated by the council. So this is just correcting a budgeting error of seven thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars for making a debt service payment that we're obligated to make. And that's the, the gist of it. But if you have any more questions, I'm happy to answer that.
Any questions on Mr. Spalding? Seeing none, then I will go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance number fifty-five dash zero-nine dash twenty-two.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith?
Seeing no one from the public come forward, I move to close the public hearing for ordinance number fifty-five dash zero-nine dash twenty-two.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for ordinance number fifty-five dash zero-nine dash twenty-two. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinance number fifty-five dash zero-nine dash twenty-two.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number fifty-five dash zero-nine dash twenty-two as presented. This is a roll call vote. Please.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New ordinance for discussion, number fifty-seven dash zero-nine dash twenty-two. Council to consider ordinance number fifty-seven dash zero-nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance establishing the 2023 budget. Mr. Spalding?
Moved, introduced. Second.
Mr. Spalding?
Yeah. Madam President, members of the council, again, Jeff Spalding, CFO. And I'm going to start off this presentation, but my colleague Ian Zalgowski, the deputy finance officer, asked me to give him a rousing introduction for his part of this presentation. So I will do that as well. But primarily, to, to start off with, is, this is, the actual ordinance that we, that is under consideration is before you. And just to understand it a little bit more, it is really more of a technical document. There's numerous regulatory requirements on municipal finance organizations established under state code. And this document puts our budget in place in a way that meets all those regulatory compliance requirements. But the actual budget that we manage the city under goes into much, much more detail, is much more tightly defined, informative, complete. And that is actually what we will be presenting to you shortly. But to just give you the context of the relationship between this document and the budget that we actually manage the, the city under, they, they are definitely related, but they are two different things. And one good example of that, which I've talked about in past years, this budget establishes proposed budget amounts and tax levies and proposed tax rates. And all of the amounts that you see on this document are, do not match and are slightly higher than the amounts that we will actually be administering the, you know, running the city under. And, and that is all around these compliance requirements that if you don't pass your budget officially this way, then you lose some operational flexibility that I think the council wants to be able to kind of make some adjustments, reallocate money for different things as they come up during the year. So that kind of technically explains why the ordinance numbers don't match the exact budget numbers that you'll see in the next presentation. And I'm happy to take any questions about that. And if not, let me introduce our new deputy finance officer, Ian Zalgowski. He's put plenty of work and effort into this presentation, and will share with you the city of Noblesville 2023 proposed budget.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Just one moment to get set up here. That wasn't my background. Borrowing the laptop for tonight.
Is that a metallic I held over?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Ian Zalgowski. I am the deputy financial officer for the city of Noblesville. Happy to be here. We've been doing a lot of hard work in the two months and some odd number of days that I've been with the city. Part of that hard work is going to be presented in this presentation here for you. So tonight, we're going to be presenting your, the 2023 budget for the city. We're going to start with new budget features. Now, the, the top item here is not truly a new budget feature. It's something that we've been doing, and that is the difference between one-time and ongoing spending. So we define one-time spending as those expenses that are expected to carry forward year after year in perpetuity until the department comes to us and says they no longer need that. One-time spending are going to be those items that are expected to occur solely within the year. So in this example, solely within 2023, and then to not carry forward into 2024 and preceding years. Now, the new part of our budgeting exercise is the second bullet point, pilot and sunsetting one-time expenses. Pilot expenses are going to be those that are on a one-year trial period. So depending on how that one-year trial period goes, those departments may come back next year and say, hey, this was great. We want it to be part of our ongoing or base budget. Or they might say it was just a failed experiment. We don't want to carry forward with it. The other item is called sunsetting expenses. So these are going to be those items that were previously base item or ongoing expenses but are expected to retire in the year of 2023. So those expenses will not be carried forward into 2024. So because these two items share similarities with one-time expenses, we categorize those as one-time expenses. To put the budget in perspective, we first want to highlight the net assessed value growth of the city. So our certified NAV was eighteen-point-zero-seven percent, or seven-hundred-and-nine million dollars higher for 2023. The average NAV growth was eight-point-four percent for the prior four years, and it becomes ten-point-three percent when you include 2023. Now, that gives us a great opportunity to balance our debt leveraging and invest more back into the community. So we also, on the second bullet point, we continue to have strong reserve balances, and we're continuing with our strategic spend down. So our balances do protect the city from future downturns and allow for additional one-time spending on capital projects. We're expecting those balances in the max levy funds to be thirty-four-point-two million dollars at the beginning of 2023. That gives us the opportunity to strategically spend down about nine-point-one million dollars' worth of reserves. And excluding one-time spending, our revenues are projected to equal expenses next year, which is great news. As for budget growth, we are looking at an eighteen-point-two million dollar total increase from the base budget, twenty-one percent, nine-point-one million excluding one-time spending. Sixteen-point-nine percent increase for operational funds only, and that'll become important here in a second. Four-point-five percent excluding one-time spending. And because it is nearly impossible to spend one-hundred percent of the budget, we are expecting three-point-eight million dollars' worth of revisions in 2022. So that'll be by the end of the year. On this screen, we have a very granular view of our expenses and their growth from 2022 to 2023. The most important number on this page is the four-point-five percent. Mayor Jensen has tasked the departments with keeping our ongoing operational budget growth at five percent or less. We were able to hit that target this year. We are looking at a four-point-five percent growth, so we're coming in under that five percent target. And you'll see down there at the bottom is that one-time strategic spending of nine-point-one million dollars. Here we have an overview of the beginning and ending cash balances across the different categories of funds for the city. Most important thing to highlight here is that in the bottom right corner, you're going to see that we have a year-over-year cash balance change of negative seven-point-five million. That's to be expected as part of that strategic spend down. So we're trying to shrink the amount of reserves that the city has because we're not a bank that just holds taxpayer money. We want to reinvest the taxpayer dollars right back into the community. We're going to move on to the budgeted revenue. We're going to start with the 2023 tax rates. So the city sets certain tax rates, but we wanted to highlight here that those aren't just the only tax rates that our citizens are exposed to or subject to. So the property tax rate for us is a dollar-ten for every one-hundred dollars of assessed property value. Property owners in our largest tax district are paying a total rate of two dollars and seventy-seven cents per one-hundred dollars in 2022. The local income tax, the Hamilton County income tax rate is one percent. That is distributed to the county and the taxing units. But however, the residents are paying one-point-one percent total income tax for Hamilton County. Point-one percent is retained by the county for public safety costs. That gentleman that was speaking here earlier, that money goes towards his area. But a lot, some of that does get reinvested back into Noblesville. And then up to one percent remaining, the city receives a thirteen-point-one percent share of the total Hamilton County income tax distributed to income units. Food and beverage tax is one percent for the city of Noblesville. But patrons of Noblesville restaurants will pay a three percent tax rate, including one percent for state and one percent for county. And then we have the city surtax and wheel tax. The forty-dollar wheel tax is on certain larger vehicles registered within the city, and then twenty-five-dollar motor vehicle license excise surtax on all other vehicles registered within the city. Our 2023 revenue is expected to be ninety-six-point-one million dollars. You'll see that about eighty-three percent of that is coming from local taxes. And we break down that local tax into the diagram there on the right, property tax coming in at fifty-two and point-four percent, roughly fifty-two and a half, and then local income tax at thirty-seven percent. Then we have the revenue by fund type. So as a municipal government, we have regulatory requirements to budget our city by fund type, as shown here. So we have our max levy and lit fund, which houses most of our operational funds, including our largest, which is the general fund. We have debt service, other operational funds, and then our pension obligations. Moving on to budgeted expenditures. So in this diagram, we're showing that the total budgeted expenditures for the city in 2023 will be one-hundred-and-five-point-one million. Most of that will be coming from those max levy and lit funds of about seventy-seven-point-five percent, and then the rest coming from those other funds there on the left side. The 2023 appropriations by expense category, this tells a more interesting story. So what you're seeing here is of that one-hundred-and-five-point-one million dollars, where is that actually getting spent? On, on what kind of things is it getting spent on? We break down our expenses by series. So we have series one-hundred, which are personnel costs. Those are going to be salaries, benefits, retirement. Series two-hundred is going to be supplies. That's everything from fuel for the police and fire vehicles, all the way down to staples and reams of paper. Series three-hundred is our services and other charges. So those are going to be professional services, software licenses, et cetera. And then series four-hundred is our capital outlay. These are going to be major projects and also maintaining or improving city assets. We then break out the operational funds only. The reason that we do that is our operational funds really shows what it takes to, what, what it costs to run the city. So this is everything excluding those obligations that the city has. So pension, debt payments, et cetera. If you take all those out of the mix, it's eighty-seven-point-five million. About sixty-point-four percent of that is going to that series one-hundred, and it takes kind of a chunk out of those other series there. Here we have a simple visual showing the growth and the spending over our base budget. Only about half of the eighteen-point-two million will be going to ongoing or base spending after 2023. And then I'm showing here the eighteen-point-two million dollars broken down into the three categories. You have nine-point-one million for one-time spending, about five-point-six million for ongoing or debt service payments, and then three-point-five million for ongoing operational costs. That ongoing debt service payment has gone up, interestingly, because of a financial instrument that we use called the one-year bond. It allows us to capitalize on the growth of the city and also allows us to maintain our steady dollar-ten tax rate. So as the city grows and expands, that one-year bond grows and expands proportionally. We have budget increases by category. So this is taking that eighteen-point-two million dollars and breaking it down into those four series that I've referenced. Budget increases by department. So you'll see here the departments are broken down as far as what their requests were for their increases for the year. Important thing to note here, this does not include ten-point-five million of non-departmental. Non-departmental houses a lot of funds that'll be appropriated across the different departments, things such as pay raises, cost of living raises, capital spending out of the, the strategic spend-down plan, items such as that. Here we have a summary of the ongoing spending budget increases. New positions, we're expecting nineteen new full-time positions, including eight fire and six police, for a total cost of one-point-eight million. For pay adjustment, we're looking at a three percent cost of living increase, equalling about a million. Other personal service costs, these are going to be special assignment, certifications, overtime, part-time employees, that's three-hundred thousand. Inflation-related expenses, so as we all know, inflation has averaged eight to nine percent year-over-year. So we've got hit pretty hard with that. And that's affecting everything from fuel to utilities, miscellaneous supply costs. Fire is requesting a slew of new vehicles, a new ladder truck, an engine, and an ambulance. So the total lease payments for those are going to be four-hundred thousand dollars per year. Outside legal services is going up one-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's just an increased need for outside legal service for the city. And then we have about a million dollars of other miscellaneous increase. So building security improvements, police and fire supplies, and public purpose grants are some examples of those. Let me get down to the one-time spending increases. So the mayor's office has graciously requested a five percent inflation relief bonus for city employees. This is done to help curb the impact of inflation without actually increasing our ongoing spending. So very strategic move there. We have four-point-eight million dollars with, for major capital improvement projects, which we'll get to more of those in a second here. Facility improvement for city hall and other buildings, one and a half billion. Other equipment and one-time contracts, one-point-two million. And then property and casualty insurance loss fund support of about one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. The 2023 appropriations by department are broken down as follows. And then there on the left side is breaking down those executive and administrative, planning and economic development, and other department categories in more granular detail. And then as we did before, we're showing the appropriations by department for operational funds only. And you'll notice here, public safety is definitely our largest operational expense at about forty-five-point-five percent. And because of the way that we operate, we have different types of funds that we regulator, regulatorily have to have. And there are special considerations on how those funds are spent. So here we have the property tax debt levy funds only, including long-term and short-term debt. These are going to be projects that go to improving street maintenance projects and other small projects funded by both long-term and short-term debt. Moving on to capital funding. The 2023 capital project funding is totaling eighteen-point-seven million dollars. The 2023 capital project funding is totaling $18.7 million. I want to highlight first this area at the bottom, the 5.1 million and 4.5 million. That is the one-year bond that we were talking about previously. Four and 1/2 million of that is going to go towards Pleasant Street, phases two and three, with 5.1 million or the balance of that going towards other capital improvement projects. And then there at the top are the different operational funds that we're expecting to spend for capital projects in 2023. Here we have a menu of capital projects for 2023, so these are the projects that the mayor's office is focusing on for next year. Not all of these are going to be spent out of operational funds. There are some non-budgeted funds that some of these could be expensed out of. Other notable items. Health insurance employer premiums are at $10.5 million. That is everything from medical, dental, vision, and Medicare expenses. It does not include Medicare taxes from payroll. Property and casualty self-insurance contribution is at 1.2 million. That does include the $135,000 to support lost fund balances. Park program subsidy continues from last year of $200,000. We are introducing a parking subsidy this year of $300,000. That is just to prevent the forecasted negative fund balance in our parking meter fund, Fund 117. And then finally, we have contingency appropriations. These are down to $815,000. These are the amounts budgeted across several funds for costs unknown at the time of budget adoption. Just gives us the flexibility throughout the year to respond to changes in economic situations or different things that the departments might run into. And with that, I will conclude. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Any questions of either Mr. Spalding or Mr. Zogowski?
I just have one, Madam President, that I wanted to ask. I know this came up during our budget presentations, but as we're talking about preserving a strong reserve balance, I just wanted to know if you could touch on how we landed on that number for the strategic spend-down and how that is still above the recommended levels.
Yeah, I think that was...
Well, we do, actually. Sorry, I'll just chime in here. As Ian said, about two and a half months, and it's certainly ramped up very fast, but that analysis really comes not from just looking at a snapshot of today, but we have another document that is even more detailed than the budget, that is our city fiscal plan that projects off five years and where we kind of just hone in on the strategic spend-down amount. We're certainly looking at our available reserves, which all of that's mentioned in this presentation, but we're looking at five years out and saying, where do we think the city will be in five years? Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball, but using rational, reasonable estimates, if we see that that balance is growing to a level that seems to be more than the city will need, then that tells us, hey, there is an opportunity to take some of that money and reinvest. And it's kind of through that analysis with some numbers that we're showing out in 2026, 2027, saying, it looks, it seems prudent now to take $9.1 million of our current reserves, and we won't have a problem five years from now if we do that today, so.
Awesome, yes.
The fiscal plan, if you're not a numbers kind of person, it's great reading material to help you fall asleep. It's pretty thick, just numbers.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Mr. O'Connor.
Not a real question. I mean, we've all spent quite a bit of time on the budget, and I think this has now gotten to the point where we've really got a tool that we can use from an operational perspective. And, you know, it's taken a while to get to the point where we've got some strong data points here that we can rely on going forward, and it wasn't something that happened overnight. So now that we've got this baseline to work with and on a go-forward basis, I think this becomes a real tool, and I think the taxpayers will feel better and more comfortable, and there's credibility here. It's all transparent, and I think this is a very well-done budget. And I'll commend the administration for keeping the spend at 4.5% with inflation, as you said, 8%, 9%. It's a challenge in the environment we're in, but nonetheless, I think we're in great fiscal shape, and we're trying to make reinvestments in the city and different things, so good work done by everybody on the OFA team and the administration, and I'll even give the council members some credit, because we've sat through a lot of budget meetings, and it's, you know, it's been enlightening, and it's great to see this come together the way that it has, so good work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Then I will go ahead and open the public hearing for the 2023 operating budget.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
Seeing no one from the public come forward, I move that we close the public hearing for the 2023 operating budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for the 2023 operating budget. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero. Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance number 58-09-22, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city of Noblesville, Indiana taxable economic development revenue bonds, series A and B, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Need to introduce.
Second.
Ms. Smith.
Good evening, everyone. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of a bond pursuant to the economic development project agreement that was approved by this council at the May 24 meeting for the Midland Point project. As you may recall, this project is located at the, on 34 acres at the southeast corner of State Road 32 and Hazel Dell Road. The bonds for this, the bond will be for an amount not to exceed 13 million and purchased by the developers. The debt service will be paid by the TIF revenues generated by the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions or go into more detail if you would like.
Any questions of Mrs. Smith? Seeing no, thank you very much. We'll see you in weeks. Counsel to consider ordinance number 59-09-22, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and the sale of short-term bonds of the city, series A, for the purpose of providing funds to be used for the cost of certain capital projects.
Moved, introduced.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Madam President, members of the council, again, Jeff Spalding, CFO, and this next series of ordinances ties in directly with the budget presentation you just saw, and actually, that's the reason they're on the agenda tonight, is I want to try to have the context all kind of together and thoughtful about how we're moving these items. And so this one is the series A. If you remember on that one slide that Ian presented, there was information for one-year bond that had two parts, and didn't say series A and series B on it on the slide, but that's what the two parts here are. Series A represents the amount that was in the $5 million-ish dollar range that is just for a, an array of capital projects that the city is planning to do, all, you know, relatively small in dollar amount and pretty much ready to go to have the money spent down quickly. And even on the next item that you see that goes along with the appropriating ordinance for this, there's a list of those proposed items. This item itself is just the approval to issue the debt. And with that, I'll stop there and take any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Spalding? Okay. We will move on then to counsel to consider ordinance 60-09-22, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the capital project's short-term general obligation bonds of 2022, series A, and establishing a public hearing.
Moved, introduce.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Yep, so again, and kind of previewed it a little bit. This is companion item with the one above it, and again, under state law, not only does the council have to authorize the issuing of the debt, and the council has to authorize the spending of the proceeds from the issuing of the debt, and that's what this second item does. And as I mentioned before, there's an Exhibit A attached to it that lays out at least the current plans for how those dollars will be spent.
Okay.
So again, happy to take any questions about that.
Any questions of Mr. Spalding on this one?
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we establish a public hearing at our next meeting for ordinance
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 60-09-22 at our next regular meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero. Thank you very much. Counsel to consider ordinance number 61-09-22, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and the sale of short-term bonds of the city, series B, for the purpose of providing funds to be used for the cost of the Pleasant Street project, phases two and three.
Moved, introduce.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
All right. So take everything I said about ordinance 59-09-22, keep it all except these two things, and that is it's series B, the dollar amount's about 4.5 million planned on this bond, and the use of the funds will be some initial costs associated with the Pleasant Street phase two and three. So, but very much the same type of financing, all structured the same way. We're actually going to go solicit proposals for the two of them together, would expect, you know, as a consequence, the same interest rate, that type of thing. So we're just, we're just breaking them out separately because of the distinct different purposes of the use of funds for series A and series B.
Questions of Mr. Spalding?
Just one, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Spalding, have you gotten any indication on where market rates are for the shorter-term bonds? I have a, I kind of think I know where it is, but maybe you haven't.
Wherever you think it is, it's going up. No.
Good answer, but...
So...
Not until November.
Yeah.
So...
Don't know for sure, starting to get a little bit of an indication that, you know, in the 4% or above range for, you know, short-term, you know, tax-free municipal debt, that's either one- or two-year term, it does seem like the yield curve right now is kind of flat between those two, again, moving and changing all the time, but, you know, not significantly sloped up or sloped down, but a little above 4% and that the, that fact in truth will inform another action that we'll be talking about later this evening. So, but somewhere in the just above 4% range. But you never know at the, as you're having folks work on the proposals, depending on their circumstances, the potential lenders, you know, we may, we may get something a little bit better than that. We'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, the one, the two-year treasury, about 4.26, so it's pretty flat.
Yeah.
I knew the answer before I answered the question. I was wanting to see.
Well, good, I passed the pop, I passed the pop quiz.
Yes, good job. Any other questions of Mr. Spalding? We will move on to counsel to consider ordinance number 62-09-22, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the capital project's short-term general obligation bonds of 2022, series B, and establishing a public hearing.
Moved, introduce.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Yes, members of the council, again, this is the companion item to go along with the previous ordinance, and again, it's the council authorizing that once we've issued the debt, have the money in that we're allowed to spend it, so.
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move to establish a public hearing for 62-09-22, our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing for ordinance 62-09-22 at our next regular meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero. Thank you. Counsel to consider resolution RC-42-22, a resolution approving, one, a declaratory resolution, an economic development plan of the redevelopment commission, establishing the Midland Point economic development area, and, two, the order of the plan commission. Mrs. Smith.
Good evening again. This resolution, along with the bond ordinance that was introduced earlier, the next steps in carrying out the commitments from the economic development agreement for Midland Point. This resolution creates the Midland Point economic development area. Within this area, there will be two allocation areas that you can see on your screen. Allocation area one will be for the commercial portion of the project. Allocation area two will be for the residential portion, and this will allow us to capture the tax increment, which will be pledged at 95%. This was presented to finance committee and comes to you with a favorable recommendation. Any questions?
Questions of Mrs. Smith?
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move to approve resolution RC-42-22.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-42-22 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counsel to consider resolution RC-43-22, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Justice Promenade Senior LLC. Mrs. Reed.
Good evening. This item before you tonight is an example of the continued investment from Justice Companies and brings us one step closer to a full build-out of the Promenade development at the northeast corner of State Road 32 in Hazel Dell. Promenade Trails will include the construction of a 55 and better active adult community with 59 cottage rental homes and 151 market-rate apartment units. Promenade Trails will be a $50 million investment and is the culmination of a collaborative effort between Justice and the city of Noblesville. The economic development investment is not to exceed the amount of $1,780,000. There are many benefits that this project brings, and I'm going to highlight a few of those. The Promenade project as a whole includes expanding retail opportunities on the west side of town, but we'll target in on specifically what the trails will bring. So with this project, the city will get a multi-generational living opportunity within that development, everyone's favorite topic, trail connectivity. With this development, the city itself will construct a new culvert on Mill Creek Road to include a pedestrian bridge over the sly-run regulated drain, which has also been referred to as the creek, which actually has a real name after talking to engineering. In addition, the developer will bring the trail along Mill Creek Road with that bridge project that will fill a gap to connect Promenade Woods Residence to the Midland once the Pleasant Street project is completed. This leads us closer to a final build-out, again, I mentioned, and Justice has invested heavily both in infrastructure and aesthetics at this property after taking ownership in Completion of the Promenade Shops Boulevard to the east to connect Little Chicago and Mill Creek with Frontage Road, and also, we will be getting regional detention in this area. There will be more announcements and developments to come with this project, but tonight we're talking about just the investment in Promenade Trails. The Justice team is here tonight if we have any questions, and also the economic development team and myself, so please let us know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, Mrs. Reed? Or petitioners?
Madam President, just from a timing perspective, what is the petitioner thinking about from an initiation perspective?
I think they would like to be construct, under construction yet this year, if possible, weather permitting, but I think I saw a completion date of 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move we approve resolution RC-43-22 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-43-22 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counsel to consider resolution RC-44-22, a resolution approving a lease between the redevelopment authority and redevelopment commission, and approving the issuance of lease rental bonds by the redevelopment authority and other matters related thereto. Ms. Lee.
Yes, Madam President, members of the council, my name is Lee. On the three-phase Pleasant Street project, so the next two resolutions that we're going to take, along with the series B one-year GO bond that Jeff Spalding talked about earlier, are really a part of an overall comprehensive plan of finance for the large three-phase Pleasant Street project. It's been... It's been a way to manage certain debt limits of the redevelopment district of the city, et cetera. So the very first one, Resolution RC-44-22, is approving the issuance of lease rental bonds by the Redevelopment Authority. These lease rental bonds will, one, redeem the 2021, what we call Ban One, which really kind of started the funding for the engineering and the right-of-way for the Phase One of Pleasant Street project. And so this will take that out and make it a long-term 20-year bond, up to $59.5 million. So it will take out the original approximately $18 million ban, and then also have funds for additional right-of-way engineering and construction for Phases Two and Three. It's a maximum of 20 years, and it is a maximum annual rental of 5.2 million. So that's Resolution 44-22.
Perfect.
Happy to answer questions.
Any questions on Mrs. Lee?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I move we approve Resolution RC-44-22 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution RC-44-22 as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero. Thank you very much. Council to Consider Resolution RC-45-22, a resolution approving the issuance of bonds and notes for Pleasant Street, Phases Two and Three. Mrs. Lee?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. RC-45-22 authorizes the issuance of bonds by the Redevelopment Commission, but also, more importantly, authorizes bond anticipation notes, and we're referring to these as Ban Two. So Ban Two would be used to fund right-of-way acquisition and engineering for Phases Two and Three of the Pleasant Street project. We don't anticipate the Redevelopment Commission actually issuing long-term bonds in the future to take these out. We anticipate doing the same thing that we're doing with Ban One. We would authorize a Redevelopment Authority lease financing, again, for debt limit management purposes, to take out that ban. And so we're looking at a maximum ban of $15 million. The one big change from what was originally proposed to you, there was a maximum interest rate of 4%. And Jeff can speak to this a little bit more, but based to some very swift shifts in the market recently, and the fact that documents get drafted a little farther in advance, and the market's moving very quickly, Jeff is getting some feedback from some banks that maybe 4% is a max that is not, that they can't really work with and bid competitively on. So we're looking to actually increase that maximum to 5.5% in order to hope to get more competitive bidding on this short-term ban. We're looking at either 12 months, 18 months, or 24 months, based on whatever the bids that he gets. It's a maximum of five years, but we don't anticipate going out to five years. So, and that is a maximum of $15 million.
Madam President, just for the council's knowledge on that, that change has been made in what the clerk has as a packet, and the resolution's actually before you. So what was emailed out had 4%, but now what's before you is the five and a half percent that Ms. Lee just indicated.
And one other quick note on that, the Redevelopment Commission will have to take that up as well and adopt an amended and restated bond ban resolution to approve the 5.5% maximum, and we will also republish public notice of that maximum interest rate.
But we do not need to amend before redoing it, which... Yeah, you don't need to amend because we fixed the packet before the meeting tonight. So what's before you is the correct resolution.
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve Resolution RC-45-22 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution RC-45-22 as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council to Consider Resolution RC-46-22, a resolution regarding the 2023 High-Assessed Value Levy Growth Appeal. Mr. Spalding?
Yes. Again, Madam President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO, and this is another item that I intentionally align with the budget because it's integral in all the budget numbers that you've seen. And the basic construct here is that in Indiana municipal finance law, there's a complicated, you know, algorithm that determines how quickly local units of government can grow their property tax levy. But there is some recognition that you have some communities where their pace of growth is faster than typical throughout the state, and as was referenced earlier, and I think people that live here know, this is one of those communities with, you know, extremely strong AV growth, you know, averaging eight and a half percent over the last four years, 18.7% in just the last year. And so that's well above the statewide averages of around 5%-ish or so. So consequently, in that situation, if a community chooses to do so, they can seek approval from the DLGF to request an adjustment to their maximum levy to recognize the fact that they, since they are growing, they can generate a slightly larger property tax levy without increasing the tax rate burden on their citizens. So what this resolution does is says the council approves moving forward with that and requesting that I submit all the paperwork to do that. And the last thing that you need to know about that is it is assumed within all the budget numbers that you saw tonight that we will proceed with that, and the revenue that would come from this action was included in the projected revenues that you saw earlier. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on Mr. Spalding?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move we approve Resolution RC-46-22 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Resolution RC-46-22 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Boyce?
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Eight-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last item on our agenda this evening is Council to Consider Approval of the 2023 Regular Meeting Schedule. Ms. Lee?
And now to bring us down to soft landing, I am presenting here the schedule of your regular meetings for next year. It seems a little early, but this is to accommodate our planning department in planning all their scheduled meetings, which are dependent on your meetings. I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have two meetings, two weeks in a row, at the end of November, first of December. That couldn't be avoided because if we moved November meetings up a week, we would fall on Election Day when we are all up for election. So that doesn't work too well.
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move we approve the schedule of 2023 regular council meeting schedule. That's redundant.
Second.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the 2023 regular meeting schedule for the Noblesville County Council. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero.
Oh, Ms. Lee's going to send some soft-landing vibrations to Jake Fowle.
Yes. Okay. With that, we have covered all the items on our agenda for this evening. Are there any council comments? I would just like to echo Mr. O'Connor's comments to the Finance Department for all of your hard work and effort on putting together the budget for this evening, the presentation. And we will look forward to having that vote in the coming weeks. So thank you very much.
Be safe out there, folks. There's a lot of orange cones, but it'll be worth it in the end, so be patient.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.